Welcome to the public hearing tonight for the Board of Finance. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm Lisa Hebner, Chair of the Board of Finance. We have with us our House Vice Chair, Linda Schofield, Derek Peterson, Robert Helfand, and Mike Doyle is on his way. We also have with us the Director of Finance, Amy Merriweather, Superintendent of Schools, Matt Curtis, Town Manager, Maria Capriola. We've got the First Select Woman, Wendy Maxstutis. Members of the Board of Selectmen, if you could identify yourself.
Amber Abiel.
Heather Gans. We also have with us the Chair of the Board of Education, Susan Salina. And are there other members of the Board of Education who are here?
None.
Okay. And as Maria and Matt come up, we'll ask them to introduce their staff during their presentations and their boards.
Eric just walked in, Lisa.
Okay, and Eric Wellman from the Board of Selectmen. So, welcome, everyone. We also have Jeff Wazinski from Tecton, who will be doing presentations later tonight for the Board of Ed. So, the purpose of tonight's public hearing is to hear from citizens about projects that will be put to referendum for supplemental appropriations, which are increases in spending for previously approved projects and one new project. None of these proposals... Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay. None of these proposals will result in a new property tax increase because they are being funded by grants, savings, or previously approved dollars. As you will hear, the request for increased spending we will discuss tonight result from the unusual nature of the times we are living in. They involve costs related to the pandemic, cost increases resulting from inflation, and the expenditure of federal and state grant dollars that have been distributed to municipalities all across the nation. They will be going to referendum because our charter requires it, and I'll walk you by in a minute. Amy, if you could switch the... Do I need...
Can I do it?
It's over there?
Yes.
I'll just go over there. And how do I turn it?
Up and down?
So, this could be ugly. I'm not very good with the computer, so we'll try and do our best. If it doesn't work out, I'm going to ask Wendy to come up and help me with the The proposed supplemental appropriations are $2,261,837 on Latimer Lane, funded by grants and savings; $1,254,200 for the Terrafield-Bloomfield Trail, funded by grants, which is a new project; $1,794,000 for the Firetown Road Sidewalk, funded by grants; oh, the Bloomfield is not the new project, it's the Firetown that's the new project; and $913,072 for the Hot Meadow Connectivity Project, funded by grants. I'll start with an overview of the financials and why these projects are going to referendum. Then we'll hear from Jeff Wazinski from Tecton and Maria Capriola, the Town Manager and Town Projects. After presentations, we'll have public audience, with each person having three minutes to speak. And after we get through all speakers, anyone who wants to speak again for three minutes will have an opportunity to do so. We'll ask you to keep your comments to the appropriations we are considering tonight. One question we have been asked a lot is, why are we going to referendum if there will be no new property tax increases? The short answer is that a referendum is required by state law in our town's charter. Appropriations are legal actions, which are legally binding votes, that public officials, like the Town Manager and the Superintendent of Schools, need before they can spend money. That means officials have power to execute instructions, executive branch function, about how money will be spent, but their authority is limited by the instructions we give tonight through the appropriations. Without appropriations, public officials cannot spend, so they're a crucial part of democracy, bringing you back to high school history. This is a separation of powers, and they may not make policy-spending decisions unilaterally. Just as Congress controls the power of the purse in our federal government, Simsbury's elected officials and citizens have the last word over how the town's money is spent. Appropriations must be adopted by citizens or elected officials. This is true even for appropriations that are funded by outside sources such as grants. Why? That seems counterintuitive. Well, there are a few reasons. A community may choose, for example, to reject free money because it doesn't like the project that is too big, too noisy, too ugly, or will add increased congestion. A community may reject a grant that has a large-town match or that will increase operating costs in the current or future budgets. Some communities may reject grants because of ideological positions that they hold. At the end of the day, appropriations are citizens' decisions about what they want for the community and reflect citizens' visions and values. It is a power that is kept as close to citizens themselves as possible. Under state law, if a town staff spends money without an appropriation, they can be personally liable for the amount they spend, so it's actually a very big deal. So, what does our charter require? Appropriations are legal authorizations to make expenditures and incur obligations for specific municipal purposes. It has nothing to do with where the revenue is from. They are capped in amount and time. They can be broad or specific. In some towns, appropriations are approved at town meetings. Simsbury's charter eliminated the town meeting. It provides that appropriations may be made in four ways: at the annual budget in May, supplemental appropriations between budgets, what we'll be doing tonight, emergency appropriations, and citizen petitions. The last two happen rarely, but they do happen occasionally. Most appropriations are made during the annual budget process, which ends in a referendum for citizen approval, usually in May, again, keeping the appropriation very close to the citizens themselves. The charter permits supplemental appropriations, which may be made, between annual budgets for spending that was not budgeted in May. Supplemental appropriations most often are for cost overruns on projects that have already been approved, for emergencies, or to authorize spending new grants that weren't anticipated when the budget was approved. This is what we will be doing tonight. In most cases, you'll see the supplemental appropriation is recommended by the Board of Selectmen and approved by the Board of Finance with no citizen action required. However, which is why we're going to referendum, the Boards of Finance and Selectmen do not have the authority to approve supplemental appropriations that in total exceed 3% of the operating budget, nor may they approve individual supplemental appropriations for projects that are greater than 2% of the operating budget. Latimer Lane is more than 2% of the operating budget, which is why we're here tonight and why we must go to referendum. The other supplemental appropriations are more than 3% of our operating budget, mostly because of the influx of a lot of federal dollars based on the pandemic from both the federal and then through the state. So, it is an unusual situation. I've been doing this for 15 years. It's the first time I've seen it. So, unusual times call for unusual solutions, and that's why we're here tonight. After hearing from citizens, the Board of Finance will vote to send Latimer to referendum for citizens to decide. The Board of Finance will also approve supplemental appropriations for referendum for grant-funded town projects. And then, at our meeting, we'll also be looking at approving a supplemental appropriation for the stadium seating at the high school. What I'm going to do now is ask Maria, do you want me to go through the individual projects or do you want to go through them with the chart? I'll keep going. All right. So, what I'm going to do is I'm going to walk you through the money because we're the Board of Finance, and then I'm going to turn it over to the Town Manager and the Superintendent, the Board of Ed, to walk through the substance of what is actually being approved. For Latimer Lane School Renovator's new project, the town will be asked to approve $2,261,837 increase in the previously approved budget due to increased costs from supply disruptions and inflation, not from an increase in scope. We have had previous meetings and have confirmed with staff that this is not an increase in scope request. This is just normal cost. Tonight, we are only considering the additional $2.2 million for Latimer, which is proposed to be funded through capital reserves. And capital reserves will be funded with general capital reserves, some American Rescue Plan Act money, which we got from the federal government, which will be transferred to capital reserves. And then, we are anticipating another $678,551 in additional state grants, but those are reimbursable grants, so we authorize the full amount and we get the reimbursement later, and that will replenish the capital reserve fund. All of this allocation will not result in a property tax increase because this is being funded by grants and capital reserves, which are our savings account. The original Latimer appropriation was for $36 million and some, and it was approved by 79% of the voters in 2021. The new total cost appropriation will be $39,054,242. At referendum, will be a request to appropriate $1,254,200 supplemental appropriation for the Bloomfield-Terrafield Trail, paid for with State Local Transportation Capital Improvement Grant, which is called LotSIP, and I'll be using that going forward, LotSIP, increasing the original project total from $1.5 million to $2,819,400. Again, no property tax increase because it is being funded by a state grant and by a previously appropriated and funded town contribution of $275,000. At referendum, citizens will be asked to approve $1,794,000 supplemental appropriation for the Firetown Road Sidewalks, paid for with LotSIP and a Community Connectivity Grant, and with previously approved sidewalk dollars, as broken down on the slide. This grant came in after the budget. The total cost is $1.8 million, which includes grants and the supplemental and the contribution from the town of $35,000. Again, no new property tax increase because it is being funded by grants and a small-town contribution that was already approved during the May budget process. At referendum, citizens will be asked to approve $913,072 in supplemental appropriations for the Hot Street Connectivity Project, again, paid for with State Local Transportation Capital Improvement Grant, LotSIP, and with previously approved sidewalk dollars, as broken down on the slide, increasing the original total project from $810,000 to $1,756,596. For members of our board, this is a little different than what we approved in August because a new grant has subsequently come in since we met in November, and that grant is for $457,224. So, we're adding that because it recently just came in. Again, no new property tax because it is being funded by grants and prior appropriation proved during the budget. You'll note in the bottom that there will be an additional town match required that will be part of the 2024 budget process, or come back to this board before the budget process if needed earlier. The Town Manager has confirmed with council that we may wait for the 2024 budget cycle to approve the town match. With that, I will turn it off over to Jeff at Tecton, and then we'll go to Maria Capriola for the town projects, and then we'll start the public hearing. So, Jeff, welcome.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Jeff Wazinski. I'm a Principal at Tecton Architects. I'm going to review the Latimer Lane project and hit some of the highlights on the ad-alternates that will be discussed later at the Board of Finance meeting. But first, the few slides, intro slides, to give you an idea of what the Latimer Lane project will entail, what it could look like, and the scope of work. And this is a view towards the southwest. On the left side of that view, you'll see the new cafeteria, and on the right side is the new gym addition. Couple slides on the media center. You can see some completely reinventing the interior of the space for the media center. You see the colors, lots of natural daylight filling the space, a lot of flexible, adaptable space, really 21st century kind of educational pedagogy's incorporated into the interior renovation of the project. And then, lastly, the proposed cafeteria. Again, views to the exterior, natural daylight filling the space, really large, wide-open spaces, adaptable and flexible for educational purposes. And the floor plan here, outlined in yellow, is the original footprint of the existing building. So, you can see the additions are on the right-hand side, which is the gym, cafeteria, kitchen area, and on the left side, some additional classrooms. When we take that away, you'll see the finished product, and what we're trying to do is centralize some of the shared core spaces of the building in the center of the plan so that we minimize the travel distances from the typical classrooms to those shared spaces like art, music, and media center. So, the reason for the presentation tonight is really to summarize the budget and where we are with the budget. So, as the Chair had represented, the original referendum was the $36,792 number. The budget overage, just for the base scope of work, was $1.7 million, leaving a revised budget without alternates at $38.5 million. So, the primary focus of the rest of the presentation is to talk about the ad-alternates to the project. So, the base bid came in, and then we identified a series of eight alternates, and we discussed this at length during our special meeting with the Board of Education a few weeks ago, and narrowed those ad-alternates down to three. The three ad-alternates are alternate ad-alternate number two, which is site work-related. It entails the construction of some seat walls, fixed furniture, and some other landscaping features, which I'll go over in some more detail. Ad-alternate number three is site work. Again, it's related to a change in a gravel surface to concrete and then stamped concrete, and again, I'll go over that detail. And the last item is item number five, which is the South Courtyard, which is really the development to use that space for educational purposes. It's immediately adjacent to the music room, and it has doors that open up into that space. So, when you look at the original referendum and the budget overage, and you look at the addition of ad-alternates two, three, and five, which total the $494 number, the $494,863, you're at the revised budget as it was originally presented earlier. So, we're looking at a proposed supplemental appropriation of the $2.261. And what I'd like to do now is just kind of walk you through the ad-alternates that are being contemplated for the additional appropriation, which starts with the site work, seat walls, and fixed furniture first. So, the images on the far right-hand side give you kind of the flavor for what the construction and the look and feel will be. The items in yellow, number two, are the general placement of where those would occur on the site, and you can see they're spread out throughout the site. And then, this view here is a more detailed view, and we were asked after the last BOE meeting to give you a little bit more detail as to what is included in each of the alternates. So, we're constructing about 90 linear feet of seat wall. We're appropriating, and they're blue on this diagram, if you can see that far, about 12 fixed tables and chairs in alternate number two. Also, we're adding nine fixed benches and then an additional fence at the pre-K play area. So, all told, what this will do from an educational perspective, it provides outdoor classrooms for about five to six typical classrooms, so about 100, 120 students overall. And I mentioned this at the Board of Education meeting, the reintroduction or reconnection with outdoor educational space is so important as we learned through the last several years here. So, that's why the group collectively felt that this was an important alternate to consider and present before you tonight. Alternate number three has a slight mislabeling, and I'll get into the details as to why. There's a couple different areas on the site where we're changing from a different kind of finish on the concrete, from a normal, everyday sidewalk finish, it's called a broom or brush finish, to a stamped concrete, which gives a little more texture, a little more grip. And then, we're also changing from what would be a gravel surface to a concrete surface. And the detail of that is shown on this slide. So, on the far left, which is the yellow highlighted area, that's another outdoor classroom that I spoke to. In the base bid, that's shown as crushed gravel. In the ad-alternate, we want to change that to the stamped concrete. It'll just be longer-lasting, low-maintenance, much more durable, much more useful from an outdoor educational setting. And then, the orange areas on the far right-hand side, which total about 1,500 square feet, change from the standard brushed concrete to the stamped concrete. So, these are, I know these are a lot of details, but these were important pieces to identify as part of a bid package is to try to protect the overall project from a pricing perspective. So, those are strategies that we implement. And then, the last item is ad-alternate number five. Again, this is primarily focused in the South Courtyard. You'll see the yellow number five there, and that courtyard is created with the existing building, but also the addition, so it kind of completes that loop of the building and creates a nice outdoor-protected play area. And what was designed, you'll see on the, if you focus on the bottom right, that's a plan. In base bid, it was really just a crushed stone area that could be finished out later. And the ad-alternate, it becomes kind of a mini amphitheater, if you will. So, the intent in that area is to try to support both from an educational perspective but also a social one, the interrelationship between that space and the music area. So, those are the three alternates that I wanted to summarize tonight and give you a little bit more detail. And again, I'm happy to answer, I guess, any questions after this, but the budget summary here is the original referendum in summary, budget overage for the base scope, and then the alternates, ad-alternates two, three, and five total the $494. So, again, the proposed supplemental appropriation is $2.261,837. And I will try to navigate back to your... Oops. Is that the slide that you'd like to be on? Oh, I'm sorry. I see something different here.
That's good enough.
That's good?
Yeah.
Okay.
Before you leave, Jeff, just one quick question. People, folks might not be familiar with the base bid and alternates and why we have them and what they are. If you could just give a quick description of that.
Absolutely. So, good question. So, the base bid, so we decided to identify what's called ad-alternates in an effort because of the current construction climate and escalation. We identified several alternates to try to, we call, protect the bid or protect the project, and with the hopes that we could add these ad-alternates as supplemental scope of work should we get favorable bids. We're in a tough bidding climate. We did everything we could absolutely do during the design phases, during the construction document phase to get you best value, but we still unfortunately came in over the original budget because of the current climate. So, the discussion tonight is to try to understand the value of what's bid and the base bid, which you're always going to have, and then what you absolutely would like to add. And we had quite a good conversation relative to that at the Board of Education meeting about what will serve the students best, and that's where items two, three, and five came to the top as far as the priority. So, hopefully, that summarizes the differences between base and ad-alternates. And it's a strategy to identify the value at bid time, so you're not paying, you're paying good value for it, you're not paying extra on it like a change order or something like that. So, does that answer your question?
That's good.
Sure.
If folks have questions during the public audience, you can certainly ask them, and we'll take questions from the audience.
Great.
Maria?
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good.
All right. Thank you. For those in the audience who don't know me, I'm Maria Capriola. I'm the Town Manager here in Simsbury. A few of my colleagues are joining me this evening. We have our Town Engineer and Director of Public Works, Tom Roy, and our Deputy Town Engineer, Adam Kessler, both of whom have been incredibly helpful in securing the grants that we're going to be discussing this evening. So, excuse me. We have been in a very fortunate position of obtaining and receiving nearly $4 million in grant revenue that was not anticipated during the budget process for the current fiscal year. So, just to walk you through what those grants are, we have the Firetown Road Sidewalk. So, this was a project that was identified in our Bike Ped Master Plan, and this sidewalk will be going from essentially the intersection of West Street and Firetown Road heading up towards our junior high school. The Community Connectivity Grant, this was actually a very pleasant surprise. We had applied for this grant almost three years ago at this point, and we were initially denied grant funding at the time. The state approached us, again, after a budget development and said, hey, we actually have some additional funds in this grant program. Have you built your project yet? If not, would you still like the money? So, again, this was a grant application that was vetted by the Board of Selectmen about three years ago. We had not yet built the project. Since that particular grant was not awarded, we had pursued other grant funding. Again, that was also endorsed by the Board of Selectmen, and we pursued funding through the LotSIP program for that particular sidewalk. So, right around the same time that we had learned of the grant award through the Community Connectivity Program, we found out that we were also awarded the LotSIP grant for this particular sidewalk. It's actually a really wonderful collaboration. The two state agencies were working very nicely with us, and we are going to be able to do just an incredibly thorough job building out the sidewalk. So, there was not a local match required for the Community Connectivity Grant, but for the LotSIP portion, the town contribution was only $35,000, and they put in $1.2 million. So, what we really need to do, again, is to appropriate essentially the $1.2 million in grant revenue and the $594,000 in grant revenue that we had not, again, anticipated during the budget process. These, again, were both competitive grants, so competitive grants are a bit different from formulaic in that oftentimes, we don't know what grant opportunities will come to our attention, how much we may be able to apply for, and whether or not we'll be awarded them. So, again, both of these grants were just really just, you know, wonderful news for us because they were, again, contributing to a project that had been identified in our Bike Ped Master Plan. The next project, the North End Sidewalk, so this was actually awarded through the LotSIP program previously for $810,000. We were able to appropriate that original grant award through our fiscal 2122 budget process. We did have a $33,000 local match for that grant. We will have a second $37,000 match that's forthcoming. Just like the Latimer project, many of our construction and infrastructure projects are experiencing significant construction inflation at the moment. Where we have been very fortunate is the granting agency has stepped up and said, we will cover the cost of those increases. So, they came forward and awarded us an additional $455,000 towards this project, and that was appropriated in the summer. Since then, they have awarded and increased this a second time. Since then, they have awarded and increased this a second time, so there is an additional $457,000, again, to get this project completed. So in total, there is about $913,000 that came in after the budget process that will go towards the completion of this project. For those not familiar with the project, it will be right at the intersection of Hot Meadow where the Antonio's Restaurant is, heading up into, you know, passports at Crossing, heading up towards the DOT garage and commuter lot. So again, a really great project that we were very excited about and very thankful that the granting agency stepped up with that additional nearly $1 million for us. And the construction for that project is scheduled for spring of '23. And then the third project was another Lotsip grant award, and it's to construct a leg of our multi-use trail from essentially Bloomfield heading into Terrifil. Again, this project does go back quite some time. We had encountered some permitting and and other delays. And the original grant award was appropriated during our fiscal '18, '19 capital budget process. The local match, there was a local match from Simsbury at the time and a local match from Bloomfield. Those were appropriated in past budget years. And in particular, that goes back to the fiscal, I believe, '16, '17 year. Since that time, again, construction costs have have increased significantly, and the granting agency has awarded us a little over 1.2 million to complete that project. Again, that was not anticipated during the budget process. So again, in in total, we have just under $4 million in grant revenue that we have received in order to complete these very important projects that were identified in our Bike Ped Master Plan. And again, they were unanticipated during the budget process, which is why they will be going back to referendums since that $4 million does exceed the 3% that Lisa spoke to earlier in the evening.
Wonderful. Matt, do you want to introduce folks from your department here?
Yeah, a couple of my great teammates here tonight, Neil Sullivan, Assistant Superintendent, and Jason Casey, who heads up all our infrastructure, capital, and technology.
Okay, thank you.
Be available for questions. I'm Mr. Lazzetti. Is Mike here? Yes. The MVP of the show, I'm sorry. This is Liz Eddie, our principal of Latin Lane. Sorry, Michael.
So welcome. So we'll begin the portion of the meeting, which is public audience for the public hearing. Again, if speakers will limit their comments to three minutes. After that, after everyone has spoken, if someone wants to do an additional three minutes, we'll permit a second speaking at that point. And if you could please limit your comments to the matters before the board tonight, which are the supplemental appropriations. So with that, is there anyone who'd like to speak? I'll start with the person in the back and then go to Joan. I do not. Does someone have a timer?
I do.
Thank you. If you could please state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Three minutes, I won't go off script, I promise.
No worries.
My name's Stephen DBS, 12 Lincoln Lane. I first want to thank everybody for being here, board members, committee members, fellow parents, townspeople, even those who are going to have a different opinion than mine. I appreciate you all coming out. I'm just grateful that we could have these discussions and have this this discourse. So obviously, we've heard a lot about Latimer Lane School. We've all heard about secure vestibules, undersized, understocked media center, cafeterias, enrollment. These are all obviously huge issues, and I'm confident that everybody in the room is aware of the importance of these issues and need to fix them. But for me, I think it goes even further into the supplemental things. I just want to tell you a quick story that kind of hit home for me. My father came to Latimer Lane, I can't recall if it was the science fair or the Veterans Day, could have been the art thing, but either way, in any event, very proud man, former naval officer, Vietnam veteran, former police officer, very proud of his grandchildren, grandchildren, give him a wave, and his children, the opportunities he's given them, the success they have had. And as he's walking out of Latimer Lane, he looked at me, pointed out a locker, and he said, said to me, this is a nice town you guys landed in. He goes, but is my son going to have to get a tetanus shot after we get his coat out of the locker? And I said, oh, that's funny. And I kind of, you know, it's my father, I brush it off a little bit. But then I said, it kind of stung a little bit, right? It's kind, it stung. And I was like, ooh, you know? And again, I'm confident there's nobody that would disagree that the renovations are needed, but it goes beyond that. This is, you know, we don't want a town that has rusted lockers, but well beyond that, we want to provide for the children. My son comes home every day, tells me at length how happy he is with his teachers, with Mr. Lazzetti, various other staff, his peers at Latimer. We're grateful for that, but we also wanted gym floor that my son could be proud of, right? We want an outdoor space he could be proud of. Right, learning experience, positive memories in those outdoor spaces. He deserves that. I think all those kids deserve that. We only moved here when our son was born, but we take a lot of pride in this town and the school. You know, we have the stickers on the car, I got the Simsbury hockey hat, a couple of those Backwards Eggs t-shirts, you know, we got the whole, the whole starter kit. But, you know, it's, you know, we have the whole package, but, you know, inflation is a reality, but we also believe they're willing, that what we're willing to invest in the town, our schools, is now a reflection of that kind of pride that I have, that I think all you guys have, and that's a big deal to us. So and I think we all have that, I think this is a reflection of that. So I just recommend we move forward with with all the proposals that are laid out so we can give that to these kids. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we have to run, we're late for hockey prep. So thank you so much.
You're welcome. Joan.
I want to talk about, so it might be three minutes, we'll do Latimer Lane, and then I want to talk about the infrastructure. So I'll do one at a time. Thank you.
If you exceed three minutes, we'll come back to you at the, after everyone else has had a chance.
Okay. Latimer Lane School renovation, don't call, 26 Whitcomb Drive. The Latimer Lane School renovation was placed on the ballot and approved for $36.8 million. The funds were insufficient to cover the the escalating costs, and revisions were made to reduce the project. The project as presented to the public has been reduced in scope while the costs have escalated. This project was presented prior to the consulting report for redistricting by placing the sixth grade at the junior high. We are now being asked to appropriate 2.2 million for additional costs that will probably escalate in cost overruns in time. We are living in an inflationary environment with escalating costs for everything associated with building materials and labor. There is anticipation of an increase in the spending budget for the next year, with the burden transfer to the taxpayer is also living with increased costs on a daily basis. The project should be placed on hold since there are no guarantees that there will be not more overruns, since no project going forward has a fixed price contract. A pause in the project for a year will give the Board of Education time to reconfigure the usable space, receive a cost analysis on the reduction of students through redistricting at the Latimer Lane School with the sixth grade at the junior high, and continue to give the students a quality education. Government runs on other people's money. Whether grants or direct payments, it is all tax dollars. When the buckets run low, government always raises taxes. We, the people, pay for government's insatiable appetite to fund projects, whether local, state, or federal. The taxpayers have to live within their means with less, why not government? There is no free money. I am asking the Board of Finance to place the Latimer Lane renovation project on hold for at least a year and not spend more money on a failed project that reduces the scope of the project and the ineffectiveness of the renovations. Throughout the process, we have not heard anyone presenting the overhead costs that will add to the budget year after year. Building projects that have been approved have not, have had issues with shortages, cost overruns, and escalation of unknown that have led to private industry placing projects on hold. The Board of Education, the Board of Finance is asking the taxpayers of Simsbury to continually pay for cost overruns if approved of a reduction in scope that will not fulfill the needs as presented. The Latimer Lane referendum cost $36.8 million, approved, and now 2.2 million additional costs is just the beginning of an ever escalating cost that would not be, that should not be approved for referendum vote. How many referendums will we need to complete the project if approved? And I'll go back to the infrastructure when you're done with that.
Perfect. Thank you, Joan. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Yes, I see a hand in the back.
My name is Maddie McDonald, and I'm in fourth grade at Latimer Lane School. I support the outdoor classrooms at Latimer Lane because learning outdoors makes me feel calmer. I feel happier when I spend time outside. It's easier to concentrate outside because when I'm inside, I can hear the other kids talking from the other classrooms. But when I'm outside, I feel more relaxed and easier to concentrate. Right now, if I'm inside all the, all the time, the first thing I do when I get home is go outside. If we have beautiful outdoor classrooms, we'll be able to have that same feeling in school. My mom says learning outside is proven to improve academic achievement. My teacher, Ms. Chen, says learning outside is so beneficial. She takes us outside to read, do math, and write. If we had real outdoor classrooms, we could do even more. Even if I graduate before the renovation is done, I hope my siblings and many other kids will be able to learn outside.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I just wanted to say that was testimonial time. What a great job you're doing in Latimer.
I don't think I can follow up with that as well, but I'm Leslie Coswig. I live at 14 Lincoln Lane. I have three children, two who are currently at Latimer Lane and one who will start next year. So I just wanted to show my support for the recent Latimer Lane renovation cost increases. We love Latimer Lane because of the staff, the sense of community, and the joy that it's created for our kids every day. And although the project went over, everything we choose to do is an investment that will affect the building and the ever-growing community and diverse population at Latimer Lane and be here for years to come. Our current and future students deserve this. As we've seen through COVID, anything's possible. The additional funding will provide the appropriate and usable outdoor space, which is incredibly important for our outdoor classrooms, as we've seen throughout COVID, and amazing for our students in our school. So I just want to state that this is a long-term investment in our students, in our school, and our community. So I'm I'm excited.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Joan, go ahead. You're up there.
The infrastructure appropriation. The infrastructure appropriation for sidewalks and multi-use paths is another project with open-ended escalating costs that should not be approved for referendum vote. The town is proposing an ordinance to allow bicyclists to use sidewalks and multipurpose trails that have not been designed for the purpose. Walkers of all ages, some with disabilities, will be challenged by space on narrow sidewalks. People with walkers and strollers use the sidewalks. Many children that are walkers to get to school also use sidewalks for safety. Many people walk their dogs on sidewalks that could be aggressive with bicyclists on their path. At the present time, many of the bicyclists on the road do not stop at stop signs that are required by law. If the, if the bicyclists cannot follow state law, why should anyone believe that this ordinance would regulate their conduct? This is an accident waiting to happen and inconsistent with the space on sidewalks. The town should not approve any projects without knowing the operating costs that will encumber the taxpayers. In an inflationary time with a recession on the horizon, this is not the time to approve million-dollar projects with cost overruns. A few political operatives and lobbyists can skew the vote, which will not represent the majority of the people. These projects should not go to referendum vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? Is there anyone else who would like to speak? I asked three times during a public hearing. Seeing none, I would close the hearing and then I'll open it up to questions from this board. So may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The motion is closed. Before we start with the questions, I, there was a question about cost overruns. One thing about approving appropriations is they are caps on spending. There is no authority to spend more than what we've approved. If there's a desire to do so, we have a process, especially with Latimer, would have to be recommended by the Board of Education to the Board of Selectmen, who would have to recommend it to the Board of Finance, who would have to recommend it to referendum. So it, just to allay any concerns about cost overrides or it escalating, appropriations are hard caps, so that will not be an issue. Let me open it up to questions from members of our board for our guests. Linda?
I have a question. This is a question from Maria about the sidewalk project up Firetown Road. And I'm asking, I'm surprised nobody's here, I've had constituents contact me about that project with some concerns. And I see that the project is under design, and so we don't exactly know where it's going to be yet, but we're already going to fund it. And there are people who are kind of concerned about where that sidewalk's going to be and how much of the golf club in particular it's going to eat into. So I don't know if maybe Tom can address that. Just because I'm asking on behalf of people that have been asking me.
Formal about this one. In terms of the sidewalk, it is under design right now. Before we even applied for the grant, we did some preliminary analysis to make sure that it would fit, that we had some options. If you drive through that particular corridor, it is very tricky as to which side of the road does the sidewalk want to be on. In certain areas, it makes sense to be on the west side, in certain areas, it makes sense to be on the east side. Right now, the predominant direction we're looking at is having it on the west side, the side of the country club. Always difficult with sidewalks because it's, it does affect somebody's property. And we're certainly aware of that whenever we do this type of project. We sent out a letter to all of the impacted residents, offering up the ability to ask questions. As we get through and have actually a conceptual design, we'll look to see if there needs to be a meeting. We'll probably send out another letter with a schematic of where it intends to be once we've had that nailed down, probably early January.
So I haven't looked at it in detail, but is there actually enough room? And I don't, what do you need, 12 feet to put in without making them rebuild entire greens and fairways and?
Yeah, we, in a, in a way, the golf course, what we're hoping to do is partner with the golf course. The easiest thing for us to do would be to ask for grading rights in most of that area where we would extend a slope that would impact the golf course. What we're hoping to do, and what we have some ability to do because we have this embarrassment of riches where we've received both grants, is that we may be able to offer up some additional trees and plantings that will actually benefit the course because one of their concerns has historically been, there are some bad golfers out there? They will shank it hard to the left, and on occasion, maybe the day we actually went out and met with the course, maybe they planned this, but a ball actually ended up in Firetown Road off the tee. I don't know who that was golfing, but it was not the best shot in the world, but it was certainly evidence of a risk. And there's certainly a concern, their concern was, oh, what if you now have people walking? But at the same time, it's probably a larger risk than the fact that we have motorists driving and that could startle somebody and resulting in a car accident. So we're going to look at adding some additional trees, and we're trying to work collaboratively with the golf course and the residents.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that.
Maybe a follow-up for Tom. Do the plans contemplate asphalt or concrete sidewalk?
Oh, I tell you, that's a great question. The original grant, when we first put it into DOT, the reason that that's a smaller amount is for two reasons. One, the cap on that grant, it happened to be, I think it was 594, was 600,000. So that was using bituminous asphalt sidewalk, getting it in as cheap as we could to get from A to B. Now that we have the additional grant, we're looking to do concrete the entire length just due to longevity.
Thank you.
Other members? I'll ask both Matt and Maria to speak to operating costs, but again, for this project of Latimer Lane, we are only considering the 2.2 million. This was part of the original scope. But just to confirm, are there any increases in the operating costs from the supplemental we're appropriating tonight that was different than what we had approved?
No.
Okay. And Maria, can you speak to operating costs of these projects?
Sure, it would be, here is more to rest of our trail and sidewalk infrastructure, you know, certainly, it's something that's great, we have obligations to maintain, but really, most likely, those things across would be, you know, decades of rope in terms of replacement, I felt. And as you know, we have also created, have long projects now for ongoing sidewalks and places that are, multiple.
Can I ask a question on that? Again, speaking on behalf of other people, I'm not a member of the country club, but but one of their concerns is that that's a really long section of sidewalk and that the town would not be on the hook to plow it, that they would have to hire somebody to start plowing all of that, which is not, I mean, not an operating cost they look at now. Have you thought at all about that?
Sure, so folks in our community are required to maintain sidewalks on their property, whether it's commercial or residential.
So that will just create a cost for them to absorb. I just want to be clear.
Maria, what about liability coverage? Insurance costs increase?
So typically, our safety values, we're not required to report out on our trail network, but it's something we can certainly, you know, share with.
That could potentially be an increased operating cost.
Again, typically, for reporting purposes for our safety values, it's our buildings, various infrastructure we may have in parks, pavilions, places, our vehicles, our equipment of a certain dollar threshold. But typically, again, for our safety values and premium, the trail report is included in the cost for our premium.
Any other questions from board members? I have one question for Matt and Maria. Obviously, this is a little bit complicated because it's a part of the charter that hasn't been used in 15 years. And communication about it is very important to this board. Can you, both of you, walk us through how we're going to communicate to the public and let them know, one, that there is a referendum, two, what it's for, and three, why it's happening?
I think a couple of different ways. We talked about this last time. And we started, I started drafting the letter today based on, you know, we'll see what the outcome is tonight. We have our list serves, which is a very broad, broad way we can email our community. Maria has a broad email distribution list as well. I think the decision we need to make, Lisa, is do we kind of do a joint explanation of this? Almost like a flyer, and there's different ways we're thinking about doing that right now. Could be almost a Q and A, you know, frequently asked questions approach to doing that. So there'll be a mailer, there'll be a letter from both of us. And then we have a publication, the communicator from the Board of Ed that goes to every home in the town, every address that we have, that we will also address this with.
And Matt, the communicator goes just for the public, not just to school families?
Correct, all residents, yeah.
Does anyone have any questions on communication?
And each, just remind me, each of the supplemental appropriations will be voted on separately, right? It's not all one one?
No, that's not, no, it's, yeah. So Maria, can you speak to how the appropriations will look on the ballot?
Sure. I believe that was forwarded to you and included in your packet. I don't know if folks need us to, perhaps we could always pull that up. But Bond Counsel did assist us with drafting the ballot question. Essentially, it is one question, and it's to appropriate the aggregate amount for the various infrastructure projects.
That's okay. Yeah, so individuals will not be, as with the budget, we don't vote department by department. So this is treated, I think the rationale for Bond Counsel was to treat it more like a supplement because this is under the 3%. Any one of them by themselves would not require a referendum, but because of the amount, so they're treating it as one question for the supplement. Is that a correct summary?
Yeah, that is correct. So Bond Counsel did assist in drafting and prepared that as one question. And then Latimer will be its own question. So there would be two questions on the ballot.
And Latimer Lane is its own question because? The 2%, it's over 2% of the budget. So I'm sure that my explanation in PowerPoint will be viewed at times explaining this. But that, it's literally technical appropriations. But again, appropriations are super, super important because they're about what the community wants to do in the community with dollars that they are getting either from their own personal property taxes, from state taxes, federal government, sometimes from gifts. And they are kept closest to the people when they go to referendum. And so that's the theory behind it. Maria, just one follow-up question. It's really technical, and I apologize to members of the audience. But the 275 match for the Bloomfield grant was from a 2016-17 approved project. As I recall, that also had a state, a town match. Do we have enough to do two matches from that project?
I'm not quite sure if I'm following the question. But part of that project that was approved was funds that we used for the local match for this grant. It was, we went back and looked at the bond authorization language, and it simply said it was for multiple or various connections, but essentially to connect the trail from downtown through Terriffill to the Bloomfield Town Line. And that is the particular bonded capital project that the local match was taken from.
Okay, and that was from the bonded part, not from the state part, right?
Correct.
But didn't the state part have a town match requirement? And didn't we fund the town match through bonding? So I just want to make, has that, I guess my question is, has that been spent down? And do we have sufficient dollars left to do that?
Sure, so we used, again, 275 from the bonded amount for the town's match. Whether or not that has been spent down at this point, no.
So that project from 2017 has the full amount still in it? Do we know?
It has a large portion of it still.
Okay, and when do we anticipate that project will be done? Do we know?
Next year.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions from members of the public? I mean, from members of our board? Okay, we move on then. I want to recognize Amy Meriwether to see if you have anything the board should consider that we have not yet considered.
Nope, nothing additional.
I will ask Amy to speak for the record and ask our clerk to record in the minutes. Amy, do we have sufficient funds and savings to do this?
Yes.
Okay, so we actually had a very long meeting on this in November. But for the record, we had asked the Director of Finance to confirm that we have sufficient funds not only to do this, but to handle next year's budget requests. So we are sufficiently well-funded to handle these requests and will not be a hardship at this point that we know of, barring some other unexpected event that we can't plan for. All right. We are now ready to, if the board is done asking questions, we are ready to move on to motions. And we are in Tab 4, for those who are following our agenda. To approve capital resolutions for Latimer Lane Elementary School project and infrastructure grant for Firetown Sidewalk, North End Sidewalk and the Terriffill-Bloomfield Multi-Use Trail, and recommend to referendum. I'm not going to go through the summary because I think we have sufficient understanding of why we're here tonight based on the presentations that we had. The action we are being requested is to adopt the capital resolutions and referendum questions as presented. The attached resolution should be adopted and read into the record. So this is one we're, it's a little bit of reading, but we've seen worse. And we'll just go down the line. We'll start with Art and Linda, and then go through when you get tired. Starting on page three, we'll start with Art and then Bert.
What do you mean, starting with Art?
Starting with Bert.
What are you asking for?
To read, we have to read this. May I have a motion?
Okay.
Resolved.
The first resolved under number four.
On page three.
Resolved at the resolution?
On page four. Oh, no.
There's a page three. Does everyone have a page three?
I have a page three.
This is the new page three.
It's a new page three.
No, I don't have a new page three. I have an old page three.
Okay. We will start with Bert then.
Resolved upon motion duly made, seconded, and adopted. The reading into the minutes, do I start with that or do I go on to the next resolution?
Amy, can you let us know how you want this read?
I think you just have to read the first part in its entirety. And then the rest is actually just captured in the minutes.
Okay, resolved upon motion duly made, seconded and adopted. The reading into the minutes of the full text of the resolutions set out below is waived. Copies of the resolutions having been made available to those in attendance and recorded in these records immediately preceding these minutes.
Just a quick question, Amy. Have copies been provided to members of the audience? Do we have copies?
No, we can pull it up, though.
Why don't we pull it up? And why don't we just go ahead and read it?
Okay, resolved that the Board of Finance recommends and approves the following.
Yeah, just go ahead.
Okay, general purpose projects, non-bonds, renovation and expansion of Latimer Lane School, Capital Reserve Fund, $2,261,837. Various multi-use trail and sidewalk projects comprised of Bloomfield to Terriffill Multi-Use Trail, that's a LOT-SIP grant of $1,254,200. North End Sidewalk Construction, a LOT-SIP grant of $913,072.12. Firetown Road Sidewalk Construction, a LOT-SIP grant of $1,200,000. And the Community Connectivity Grant Program grant of $594,000, for a total of $3,961,272.12.
Okay. Would board members like to approve these individually or as a group?
As a group.
Okay, so we will then go on to resolution, the resolution on page four. Derek, do you have that?
I think I have the old one, but I have it right here.
No, that's the new one.
Resolution appropriating from the Capital Reserve Fund the amount of $2,261,837 for the renovation and expansion of Latimer Lane Elementary School, resolved that the Town of Simsbury appropriate from the Capital Reserve Fund the amount of $2,261,837 for the renovation and expansion of Latimer Lane Elementary School, including outdoor learning spaces. The appropriation may be spent for planning, design, architectural, engineering, and other consultants' fees, equipment costs, construction costs, legal fees, net temporary interests and other financing costs and other expenses related to the project and its financing. The Board of Selectmen may determine the particulars and may reduce or modify the scope of the project. And the entire appropriation may be spent on the reduced or modified project. That pursuant to Section 809 of the Town Charter, this resolution be presented to a referendum vote under the following caption. Shall the Town of Simsbury appropriate $2,261,837 from the Capital Reserve Fund for the renovation and expansion of Latimer Lane Elementary School?
Okay, Bert, if you could go on to five.
Resolution appropriating Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program Grant Funds and Community Connectivity Grant Funds in the amount of $3,961,272.12 for multi-use connections, trail development, and sidewalk construction and improvements. Resolved that the Town of Simsbury appropriate $3,367,272.12 from the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program, LOT-SIP grant funds, and $594,000 from Community Connectivity Grant Funds for an aggregate appropriation of $3,361,272.12. For, one, improvements to the multi-use connections, trails development, Bloomfield to Terriffill, including for construction costs, land or easement acquisition, and other expenses related to the project, $1,254,200 from Local Transportation Capital Improvement Grant Funds. Two, the design and construction of sidewalks in the business district of the north end of the Town of Simsbury, including for construction costs, land or easement acquisition, and other expenses related to the project, from Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program Grant Funds. And three, the design and construction of sidewalks on Firetown Road, including for construction costs, materials, land or easement acquisition, demolition and removal of materials, and other expenses related to the project, $1,200,000 from Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program Grant Funds, and $594,000 from Community Connectivity Grant Funds. The Board of Selectmen may determine the particulars and may reduce or modify the scope of the projects. And the entire appropriation may be spent on the reduced or modified projects. That pursuant to Section 809 of the Town Charter, this resolution be presented to a referendum vote under the following caption. Shall the Town of Simsbury appropriate $3,961,272.12 of Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program Grant Funds and Community Connectivity Grant Funds for multi-use connections, trail development, and sidewalk construction and improvements?
We have a motion. I'm going to call the motion from Bert, although Derek helped read the motion. Do we have a second?
I will second. I commend the board members on their admirable articulation of the resolution.
It was like story time. It was lovely.
And I second it.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion before we proceed to a vote? Okay, seeing none. All in favor of approving the motions to referendum, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everyone. We'll take a five-minute break and just give everyone a chance. This is, so what happened is we voted to move it to referendum. What's going to happen next is that it will go to the Board of Selectmen, who is charged with setting the referendum date. We are anticipating it will be on a Saturday, which is January 7th. But you will get lots of communications about it from Matt and Maria. So that's sort of the process. And then we will see what the results say. If for some reason it doesn't pass, the process would be, it would come back to the boards and they would try again at some other level. But this is for the people of Simsbury to decide, and we look forward to hearing what they have to say about. And thank everyone for coming tonight and for the presentations we had. We do have some other business. We'll be considering the high school stadium if folks want to stay. But if folks want to leave, you're welcome to do so. And we'll take like about a three-minute break for the transition. All right, guys, if everyone's ready, we'll let SCTV know we're ready to start again. We still have one more item on our agenda, and that is a request, which is also a supplemental appropriation, a reallocation of funds from Simsbury High School Air Conditioning Project to the Simsbury High School School Bleacher Projects. Members of the public may be wondering how we are doing that, given the 3% cap. But Amy has a wonderful explanation and can explain how it is we're able to do that and why we're doing it after we just approved those motions. So can you explain that?
Are we doing the bleachers or at number five?
I think we, didn't we do that?
Number five? No.
Then we will do that first. Oh, we have, so Amy, can you explain why we're doing this? Because it's related to the question that I just asked.
Right, so we had some motions that we did back in July and August for the grants that we just discussed as part of the referendum. Those appropriations were approved. However, we are at our 3%, and we're actually over our 3% that Lisa was speaking about earlier. And therefore, we need to go back to referendum for these projects. We have another project that is coming up under Agenda Item Number Six for our high school bleacher project that is, needs to be done in more of a timely manner. So what we're doing tonight is we're trying to amend the motions for the grant, the grant awards that we received for the sidewalk and the other infrastructure projects that were mentioned earlier. And what we're going to do is we are going to amend those motions from previous so that they are subject to referendum approval. And therefore, they are technically unapproved right now. And then we have capacity within that 3% cumulative total to approve the bleachers tonight if you so choose.
What we're doing is creating capacity, getting appropriations to referendum that will enable us to do supplemental appropriations. I think Maria, I'm not sure if you mentioned it publicly, but it's certainly mentioned to our board in a previous meeting that we are anticipating more grants coming into the town. And again, it's because of the federal pandemic dollars that are just, it's like drinking from a fire hose right now. Like I said, I've been doing this for a decade and a half, never seen anything like this. So we will be seeing more, and so we needed to create some capacity. And hopefully, this will be enough to get us through the budget time. But if not, so that's just the state. One thing I didn't mention during the presentation is we gave up the town meeting. And a lot of towns who kept the town meetings, this is much easier for them. They don't have to go to referendum. So, so it goes. So we have before us, we're going to need a motion, and I'm sorry to do this, but it's going to need to be read. And these are just to correct the previous motions we've already made for members of the public. Yeah, for members of the public. This board has considered this in August and July. If anyone wants to go back and look at our minutes or watch them on SCTV. So we are familiar with the projects. We are just redoing the motions to take care of the charter requirements and to get us where we need to be for the other supplemental appropriations. And then to consider the bleacher project following. Okay, would someone like to make the motion?
I have five, pages five and six. Do I have?
Linda will do it.
effective November 29th, 2022, the following motions. Resolved at the resolution of the Board of Finance regarding the Firetown Road Sidewalk Construction Project, construction project adopted August 16th, 2022 under Agenda Item Five, be amended to read as follows. Resolved that the Board of Finance approves, subject to referendum vote, the appropriation of a Lotzip grant in the amount of 1.2 million dollars and a Community Connectivity Grant Program grant in the amount of 594,000 dollars for the aggregate grant appropriation of 1,794,000 dollars for the Firetown Road sidewalk construction project. Also resolved that the resolution of the Board of Finance regarding the North End sidewalk construction project adopted August 16th, 2022 under Agenda Item Number Six, be amended to read as follows. Resolved that the Board of Finance approves, subject to referendum vote, the appropriation of Lotzip grants in the amount of 913,000 dollars and seven... 913,072 dollars and twelve cents, in addition to a prior appropriation of 810,000 dollars for the aggregate grant appropriation of 1,723,072 dollars and twelve cents for the North End sidewalk construction project. Resolved that the resolution of the Board of Finance regarding the Tarahville-Bloomfield Multi-Use Path Project adopted July 19th, 2022 under Agenda Item Number Six, be amended to read as follows. Resolved that the Board of Finance approves, subject to referendum vote, the appropriation of Lo... Lozip as opposed to Lotzip?
Lotzip. Lotzip.
It is Lotzip. Thank you.
Lotzip grants in the amount of 1,254,200, in addition to a prior appropriation of 1,020,000 for the aggregate grant appropriation of 2,274,200 for the Tarahville-Bloomfield Multi-Use Path Project.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries unanimously. We now have capacity and consider the bleacher project. Matt, or Jason, I don't know who's going to present the project, but I want to give you an opportunity to speak first, and then we'll open it up to questions.
Yeah, if Jason's prepared, we can talk through the timeline and how we got where we are, and then we can open up to questions.
Okay, thank you. Jason, if you would come, can you stand or...
Oh, sure.
Thank you.
So in 2021, we requested...
You want to go to the microphone? Or you have one?
All right. Okay, all good. So in 2021, we requested 600,000 for an 850-seat bleacher, same capacity essentially as what's there now. These bleachers were built in 1968. They don't meet current safety or ADA codes, so that's the reasoning behind the replacement. The planning and zoning process took longer than expected. It finished in January 10th of 2022. That didn't leave us enough time to go out to bid, do the demolition, do the construction of the new bleachers, so we decided to wait until after the next sports season. So that brought us to June of this year when we did look for updated pricing. The original estimates, because this was part of the 2021 budget, were originally estimated in December of 2020, so we're talking about months after COVID hit. So in that timeframe between December and June, cost of aluminum, cost of fuel, all of the supply chain issues that came up significantly pushed up those prices. So to do that same capacity bleacher, it was now an 880,000-dollar project. So fortunately, another project at SHS, an air conditioning project, actually came in under budget, and the reason that that second project was under budget was that the initial estimate came in at 1.8 million dollars, but then, in this market, HVAC equipment had been fluctuating. The original estimate was in April of... It was the very beginning of April of '22, and about two months later, we talked to two other vendors that brought that price down into the 1.2 million, but with some caveats that they weren't sure about the levels of asbestos that could potentially be there, and also, given the volatility in the HVAC market, there was concerns about going... looking for a budget that was exactly at the amount they expected it at. So even though they said 1.2 at the time, to be conservative, we requested 1.65. As it stands, the asbestos problem did not pan out after some investigations. It doesn't look like that's going to be a problem, and the market itself has actually been solid. We've talked to the vendor that's going to be doing that AC project, and they're confident that the materials are still available and the price is still solid.
I'll open it up to questions for members of the board.
Just to refresh our memories, because it's been a while since we talked about all of this, could you talk about the safety issues? I know code has changed, but are the bleachers less safe now than they were, say, five years ago? Are they falling apart?
I'm happy to report they're just as unsafe now as they were. I shouldn't joke. There is a fairly long list of codes that these bleachers don't meet, and again, this is because they were built in 1968. The codes came much later. So we are grandfathered in. There's not something that changed in between physically on the bleachers from when they were built to now. They didn't get more jagged, for instance, but they were never up to the codes as they came out. They are not ADA compliant, really by any stretch of the imagination. Some of the biggest code violations have to do with how tall they are. They're very high bleachers by comparison to what you would normally see in modern bleachers, and also the gaps beneath the stairs, which taken together is a fairly dangerous situation.
So given what you've said, is there urgency to do it now as opposed to waiting until the whole normal budget process?
This is the, I would say, largest safety concern within the district, so if, for some reason, this isn't reallocated, we would have to be looking at how this goes into the next capital, but it's going to be paid for soon, so whether we do this as a reallocation or a new funding, it's something that certainly has to happen.
I agree with that. It's just a question of the process.
Just in terms of demolition and reclamation, is there an offset to the price for them recycling this aluminum that's currently... Then steel that's currently there?
There is, although it's basically in reduction of the cost of the demo. So they look at the overall demo price, then they recognize they're savings for them to bring the aluminum in.
And how... When do we expect that this project would start? And in other words, really what I'm getting at is, how long will they hold their contract... their bid, their quote for?
The quote is to the end of the month. This month, so...
This month?
Yeah. So we're definitely on a time crunch to get this approved, yeah.
So if it is approved, then we will sign the contract tomorrow. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, it's ready to go, yeah.
Jason, why wasn't this brought to us earlier?
So I mean, I can respond to that. When the pricing came back and we started to have conversations about how to deal with the cost overrun in light of also dealing with the Latimer situation, Maria and I had a conversation of what other ways could we come forward with maybe a creative way to balance this so it wasn't adding to the deficit or like a traditional supplemental. And that's when we analyzed other projects and where we were, and we said, hey, let's come forward. Ask Maria what's the process for having this conversation. So I mean, it was relatively quick when Jason told me how these prices kind of landed, where we were. You know, I was nervous that we would have to say, come back and talk about this during the capital cycle when I quite honestly had already communicated to the public that these things would be coming down prior to the...
I may have misheard. I thought you had the bids in June? No?
The... Yeah. Right. Right, I was mixing my projects up.
So you didn't know about the additional funding until you had the HVAC bids? Is that what I'm hearing? Okay, and those bids came in when?
The HVAC bids? That was... I'd have to dig through my notes. That was in May, I believe. The original bids came back in May, but then we had estimated a higher amount that we would need, and until... It was in the July timeframe that the vendors were holding to their original prices.
So has that project been completed? Is that what I'm hearing then? The HVAC...
Has it started?
No.
So do we know that we have sufficient funds to cover the original scope?
Yes.
And can you, just for the public, say that's the 12 classrooms on the third floor and the air conditioning in the auditorium?
That's correct.
And there's no concerns about cost overrides? Because at this point, the processes are locked in? Okay, so I guess I would say just in the future, when you know about something in the summer or fall, if you could get that to us as early as possible, because if we had additional information, we haven't left ourselves a lot of room to get that before the vote, so just a request for the future on that. Can you speak to sort of what value engineering steps you took with the bleachers, just for members of the public to understand?
Sure. The bleachers, we originally came to the budget in 2020 looking for a significantly larger bleacher set of 1,400 seats, taking into account that the school population is significantly larger than it was in 1968 when they were constructed. There was not an interest in spending that level at that time for significantly larger bleachers, which we brought them down in size and rebid them.
And how many seats? We've gone from 850 to how many seats?
The current one, we're basically matching capacity, so it's 900 seats.
So not an increase in scope at this point?
Correct.
Okay. I have a few more questions, but does anyone else? Okay. In terms of pools... One of the things the Board of Finance looks at is pools of money to fund projects. I did ask Amy to pull together, how much do we have in the Board of Education Non-Lapsing Fund? Can we start with that?
5,103,08.
We are anticipating a Board of Education overage in the operating budget, which may be needed for the non-lapsing funds. I did ask Matt to come prepared and sort of give us an update on the status as to whether he thinks that will be needed at this point, or whether he has enough sufficient information to know whether it will be...
Do we have to deal with anything about non-lapsing? I mean, I can't, this early in the year, say that. I mean, we're monitoring right now as we get ready for our budget prep. We had quite a bit of turnover in hiring this year, so we're analyzing what that realized savings might look like in terms of salaries coming out, salaries coming in. We had shortages in staffing for the first couple of months of the year that may yield some savings just in terms of when we analyze that. So we have seen an increasing trend in some of the special education costs that when we get together in January or in a three-board meeting, we'll really have quite a bit of detail for your Board and for the Board of Selectmen on that, because I think it's important to understand from a trend and program standpoint what's going on there. But I mean, I feel comfortably we'd be able to work within that 651, but I can't say for sure out of that 651 what we might have to be able to allocate for something else.
Okay, and then, other than what you've just described, what other... Are you taking any other budget mitigation steps, knowing that there's this potential ever...
We may be prioritizing conversations on the equipment side and the supply side when we meet with people really talking about, do we need it? Do we need it now? We haven't frozen anything. We will run a business as usual, but just with more conversations at this point.
Okay.
We should need it anyhow due to the situation.
Right. So to the extent if you run into a potential issue or you think it's coming, the earlier you can let us know. That would be helpful to keep us in the loop on that. Then I had asked Amy also to sort of eat your Board of Education has a capital non-recurring fund within your operating budget, and just asked Amy for the status of that, what's planned for that and what's been used.
So we have planned for 550,000, and the projects have all been allocated thus far. I can't speak to the individual projects. There's several of them, but I assume that Jason has a plan for spending those throughout the year, and I'm not sure if there's any that he can defer.
So I turn to Jason on that. Could you tell us what projects you have planned for the 500,000 CNR plan and whether any of those could be deferred?
We're looking... Looking at a variety of them. We're still in the process of prioritizing, so there is a squadron line ventilation project. That's a big one out of that. Additionally, there's a boiler work at one of the elementary schools, and the high school is looking at a phone system PA issue that they've had for many years. I don't have that entire list in front of me, but those are some of the ones that jumped to mind.
Is there any capacity within those dollars to help fund the bleacher project?
CNR fund really hasn't had enough capacity to fund what the principal requests have been, or even what the Tecton maintenance report has recommended we do. It'd be extremely difficult.
What... When do you anticipate starting the HVAC project?
The HVAC project for the high school?
Yeah, the one that you're offsetting.
That's a summer project, so as soon as school lets out.
So we really don't have... I don't feel comfortable reallocating funds for... If the projects were actually reversed, that would make perfect sense to me, because you would already know what your savings are before you spend it on something that should start tomorrow, arguably. So I actually think that could end up being a good guy in terms of cost with the HVAC project, just given the headwinds that we have, kind of, not just inflationary headwinds, but as, you know, potential recession into next year could cause, you know, materials to come down a bit. I would just simply say again, if we go forward with the bleacher project right now, or let me rephrase that, if we don't go through with the bleacher project this year, then when would you... When would the next... When would you anticipate would be the next best time to do the bleachers? So I mean, the challenge there is we'd have to come back as part of this current budget season, say this is a priority again, have the conversations again, wait for the money to be authorized. You'd miss the opportunity for that fall season again, because I don't... I just don't foresee how you can have that season without a place to put... Right. A thousand people standing or a thousand people sitting. So I think we'd actually be back to this... Same timeframe? Same timeframe right there if I had to... So that's a much longer project than time-wise than I thought. So... It's the work, you know, it's almost like the renovation with the kids. It's the work around the program you're trying to do rather than the straight construction. Right.
And we're looking at demolition now and the build and the spray.
So we only miss one season.
And I would also add that the lead times on the HVAC equipment typically require that it's this timeframe that the purchase gets made, and then the actual work begins in the summer.
I know that this project was brought to us before. I want to give the former First Selectman, Eric Wellman. Under your leadership, I believe the Board of Selectmen cut this project. It was initially came in at 850 to 600. I wanted to give you an opportunity to speak to that decision and also where you are today and what has changed.
Sure, it's a good question. I can only speak for myself. I don't know why the other board members voted against it, but for me, I'm always concerned about the expanded size of the bleachers. I understand it's used by many sports and not just football, but without football, it would unlikely be needed, 1,200 seats, so that was my rationale.
And so now, with it being just a replacement cost, it's more comfortable. So, and I guess I would ask Maria and Eric, I mean, we've heard this is a priority... I mean, Maria and Wendy and Eric and Heather and Amber and everyone, but we hear this is a priority for the Board of Education, but our job is to look at the overall priorities of the town, not from any one department's particular point of view. So I would ask Maria, how does this rank with the other capital projects that are needed for the town?
Yeah, so you know, my feeling is that the bleachers have far exceeded their useful life, and you just really need to get this done, and it's a very sensible reallocation of funds from existing, you know, approved high school project to another high school approved project. So I felt a very helpful this... So I felt very comfortable with this funding approach that Matt and I have worked on.
And Amy has confirmed that she feels that there is no risk to the HVAC project with this reallocation and that it will be. We would just ask, I know from my perspective, I'm just going to ask for updates on that project so that we can track it and make sure that the HVAC project gets done, because that was the purpose of our offer to Wendy, our First Selectman.
I just want to make a comment on, one of the comments that came up last night, which was a really good question to the Board of Ed, was is this your top project? If we were during the budget, would you make this your top budget project? And the answer was yes. And so my thinking on this is as we go into our budget capital project, we've given, you know, we've allocated money for a Latimer, you know, from the ARPA funding. We are using savings here to move to the bleacher projects, which potentially could have been used for something else. So I think that our board has to do our due diligence during the budget to make sure that we look at the asks of the Board of Ed during that time and prioritize that against other asks that may not have gotten this additional funding throughout the year. That's my, that's where I'm coming from. And I would think that, you know, the smoking responsible members of our board would do the same.
Was your vote unanimous?
It was.
Susan, was your vote unanimous?
It was. And I would just add, I've talked to many of our board members, and we are very uncomfortable putting people on these bleachers. And we're inclined to just tear them down and if we can't put up new ones, because we would rather do that than run the risk and have everybody just have no bleachers.
Since 1965, has there been, have there been any injuries or?
I've had a daughter who fell through the bleachers and banged around on her way down. So I don't want anyone else to have to deal with that. It's not a good feeling to sit in an ambulance with your kid. So those openings are inappropriate. Those bleachers are inappropriate. They are used community-wide, not just by football. They're used by every team at the high school, under the lights, including youth football, youth field hockey, track teams. It is a very widely used field, and I feel very, very strongly about. This is a huge community safety issue. And I think that's the lens you should all be looking at it with. Because do you want to be answering the questions when somebody bangs through bleachers? When we could have transferred funds from one high school project to the other?
Yeah, so, and similarly, you know, I think Jason did a nice job at sort of explaining, but this was approved a year and a half ago with no move on a safety issue. So we, we all watched that and certainly want to make sure-
You lost the season. There's no, you know, there was no-
Yes.
All of 2021 had no sports.
Right. And so that's a shame, because that would have been a great time to do it. But okay. It is what it is. One of the things I'll ask both Maria and Matt, are there any other known expenditures or concerns about your budgets that are material that may be coming to us before the budget cycle? That we should be aware of?
Just, you know, I think we brought your attention during your closeout, it was operating, but not capital in nature. Again, sort of what the energy market has done to recommend setting aside, essentially pre-funding and setting aside three-year transfers that expected overage. I think that can be, you know, to be a concern. But again, that's more operating than capital.
And that we plan for with, yes.
We've given as much as we can at this point on kind of the special ed relative dismount placement cost. Everything else, we plan to discuss as part of the regular press.
Okay, I guess the only thing I'll just say, to the extent we can, this board is always very uncomfortable considering projects off budget cycle, because when you look at any one project, it's wonderful, but when you stack them up against every other project, it's still wonderful, but other projects sometimes take priority. So to the extent we can, very strong preference on this board that we budget for it. So please, Jason, take a look at your costs. If you think they're going to be cost overruns, please budget for them in May as opposed to coming back mid-year and saying they went over. So to the extent you can plan for that, that would be helpful to know, so that we aren't considering them off budget cycle. Is there anything else from members of the board at this point? Okay, let me get to my motion.
So I just, sorry to belabor the point.
Yeah, no problem.
Just on the HVAC, when do you plan on ordering that for installation?
It's how soon the vendor gets the contract.
So you've been in consistent contact with the contractor?
Yes, as of, as of a week ago, he was still comfortable that he can get these materials in, but they do have long lead times, so.
So we wouldn't have to come out of pocket? And so they actually had them in hand? Are they requiring any deposits or funding upfront?
There's not an immediate down payment on it. I'm not sure when the first installment would be due.
Okay. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, one of the things we had discussed at our last meeting is for capital requests coming up, one of the things that would be very helpful to our board is to understand the start, the proposed start and finish dates for projects as they come through. That sort of helps us plan the funding and what resources we need when. So that, we'll be talking about that during the tri-bar, just wanted to give you a heads up on that. All right, with that, may I have a motion effective November 29th, 2022 to increase the appropriation for the Sinsbury High School Bleacher Project by $345,000 funded by a capital project transfer from savings from the Sinsbury High School Air Conditioning Project? So moved.
Second.
Okay, I'll go with Linda and then Bert. Motion and second. We are now in the discussion phase. Are there any other discussion or questions we have before we vote on the motion? Okay, all in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Okay. And with that, we are done. May I have a motion adjourned?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.